Good morning. Welcome to the February 27, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. We have a relatively full house. Welcome. Would the clerk please call the rules? Establish quorum.
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 1st, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment, prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. And for an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we do have off-agenda comments, which is item number one, and we will get that displayed. Ryan Harris is our first speaker.
Okay, as Ryan's approaching, I'll remind everybody there's two minutes to speak, and we will hear public comment, off-agenda public comment, for 30 minutes. If that does not allow enough time for all speakers, at the end of the meeting, we will continue off-agenda public comment. Mr. Harris.
All right. Good morning. Got a lot of people in here today. It's very rarely happens, so it's good to see that people are showing up, because these people before you all are the ones that make a lot of the decisions for how we're allowed to live and what we're allowed to do in Sacramento. Did have some prepared to say, but I like to change it up when people are actually in here, so they kind of understand the importance of what you guys do. An example that I could give is that I would love to face you all and talk to you all. However, they've instructed me not to turn around, to talk to people when they're in here, to inform them. And they haven't given me a reason that varies, other than the color of my skin, maybe, because I've reviewed several videos. And there are a lot of people that go like this when they talk, but they're all white. And none of those people were told to turn around when they do it. However, let's see, maybe I'll be able to do it. Do you mind if I go ahead and do that, Patrick, this time, since I brought it up?
You have 58 seconds, Ryan.
Oh, so we're changing the rules, so I can talk to you all.
Ryan?
Ah, there it is.
Although there will be decorum, though.
You all see it. There it is. All right, now, go review the other videos. You see lots of white people able to turn around, talk to the people. However, they are not talking about the damage that you guys are doing to this community, so maybe that's why, as well. I don't know. But I got 30 seconds left. Let's go. Gavin Newsom, where are you at? He doesn't show up to these meetings. He's not required to. I wonder if he reviews these meetings to see what's going on. Another example would be that these meetings used to be three minutes long. When you guys come up here, you'll see how fast those three minutes go. However, they've been condensed to now two minutes, maybe even one minute. And after the Department of Health and Human Services had individuals with disabilities come up here, they now cut off the phone link, so you can no longer come in to state your comment. You have to come up here. These are the people you vote in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Valerie?
Morning.
I'm Valerie Scruggs. I'm a longtime resident of District One and a project director for Saving Our Legacy: African-Americans for Smoke-Free Safe Places. I'm here today to introduce you to our initiative empowering local communities to end the tobacco epidemic. Specifically, we'll be focusing on smoke-free multi-unit housing and outdoor spaces in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County. The recent American Lung Association State of Tobacco Control 2023 California Local Grades Report painted a concerning picture for our community. Sacramento's unincorporated areas received an F grade on smoke-free multi-unit housing and a slightly better, but still disappointing, D grade for smoke-free outdoor air. These ratings underscore an undeniable need to ensure that everyone can breathe clean air. It's critical to recognize that the CDC states note there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Even brief exposure can lead to immediate harmful harm for nonsmokers. As such, SOUL Project is committed to educating the community about the benefits of smoke-free environments and connecting those people who smoke that want to quit with free and low-cost cessation services. I'm here to extend an invitation to each of you for a personal meeting to delve deeper into this issue for your districts. We're eager to hear your insights and perspectives on how we can work together to collectively improve the health and well-being of our communities. SOUL Project will be reaching out to your staff to schedule individual meetings, and I believe that working together, we can make great strides towards ensuring that everyone has access to clean air. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to collaborating with you.
Thank you, Ms. Scruggs.
Good morning to all honorable supervisors. I'm Plushette Robertson, a District Two resident and community engagement coordinator with Saving Our Legacy: African-Americans for Smoke-Free Safe Places. I frequently hear stories about the limited options residents have for protecting themselves from smoke that drifts into their apartments through walls and windows, from neighbors who smoke indoors and on patios. One mother and daughter told me that they can't use their downstairs bathroom in their townhome because of the overwhelming smell of smoke seeping through the shared wall from next door. The bathroom is unusable, and they place towels under the door to try to keep the smoke out. A bathroom is a vital resource in any home, and for them, it's the only one on the first floor, so they must be prepared to make it upstairs to use the bathroom when they get home. Her daughter has asthma, and it forces her child to stay upstairs with the windows closed to avoid triggering an asthma attack. When she reported her concerns to the property manager, also a smoker, she was ignored, and it created a hostile relationship between her, the neighbor, and the property manager. Her only option is to move, but she did not want to move because her prop her her to move because it's expensive. It's difficult to find a place that she can afford, and it would take her daughter away from the school where her friends and communities have been built. She also has no guarantee that a smoker won't be in to in the next unit and to to her in a new place. So they are forced to endure smoke even as it harms their health. Sacramento residents are not protected from secondhand smoke at home. Studies have shown that for adults and children, the home is the main place where they breathe in secondhand smoke. SOUL's Empowering Local Communities to End the Tobacco Epidemic Project aims to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke residue and waste in multi-unit housing and public outdoor places. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robertson.
Charles?
If you can, you can see the list up there. If you want to line up the next three speakers, that way we'll get more in in the 30 minutes. That would be great. Charles.
Good morning.
Morning.
Over the last couple of months, I've taken on a few different projects related to homeless stuff. And a couple of the major ones were getting state, federal, and then privately owned medical supplies and food stuff and some survival gear to different organizations in the community. And one of my big takeaways from that has been county low-level county staff volunteer a lot. I don't get a lot of contact back from department heads and stuff like that necessarily about stuff that they want. I get a lot of nonprofits contacting me back. But the amount of low-level county staff that email me or call me, be like, hey, I volunteer for these four organizations. Can I help get stuff to them? Is really impressive. I don't see that level of civil service in the cities and the county. The county staff definitely does. I mean, I'd say the average person that contacts me doesn't just volunteer for one or two organizations. It's three or four, some as many as six. So the county, you guys are doing something right when it comes to instilling a level of civil service in your low-level staff, because they're really doing a lot of work on their off time when it comes to homelessness and some other stuff. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Deborah S. Simmons. I'm the co-founder of South Sacramento Christian Center, and I am the faith help champion with the SOUL Project. I became involved with tobacco, nicotine, and its harmful harmful effects over 30 years ago, working with Sherwood Carthen and the Tobacco Coalition. And I can remember my first attempt with smoking. I was 11. Some cousins invited me to go to the library. We never entered the library. We climbed a tree and had our first attempts of trying to smoke nicotine, and it burned me so bad, I never tried it again. But our five-year-olds, younger kids, are being introduced to vaping nicotine and other harmful products that often their parents don't even know. They have me at 70. The kids are telling me, hey, we vape. It looks like an ink pen. It looks like a whistle. And so our kids are being introduced to harmful products. Since the 1950s, the tobacco industry has targeted Black Americans with pervasive marketing. They'll pay for music festivals, magazine advertisements, and other things to suck people into using these products. And their effects, they've been very effective in what they do. When it comes to secondhand smoke in the home, children are most vulnerable, then adults, to health issues. For instance, infants in home where parents smoke are more likely to draw to die from SIDS, from Infant Death Syndrome, and they're exposed to secondhand smoke. Statistically, they suffer from weaker lungs, pneumonia, bronchitis, and other harmful things. Exposure of children to environmental tobacco smokes results in more than 150 mandatory reported respiratory-related infections in infants per year, as well as 7,500 medical issues requiring hospitalization. My acts is that you all become a champion for change with us individually and collectively. You don't have to attend our meetings, but you as voters, when the time comes for you to stand with us, please stand with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I'm speaking to you today because I know that although you cannot answer our grievances, you do serve on the SAFCA Board, which works closely with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Please remember our plea for communication with the Corps in your future endeavors with them. I first addressed this body on February 6th, and I related how difficult it was to obtain information from the Corps on the upcoming erosion prevention project for the Lower American River. Since that time, we found the Corps' public presentations to be misleading. At a recent presentation to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board meeting, the Corps stressed two things of note. One point was that the Corps completes projects wherein they include engineering with nature. In fact, this is a topic of interest to us, and we want to work with the Army Corps to achieve this end. They also emphasized their dedication to communicate, communicate, and to communicate as soon as possible. This is not what they did. The senior manager of the Corps made a statement on KCR News last Saturday. He said, "Congress recognized the need for flood protection and the danger that the community is in, and we have been given the direction to move forward as quickly as possible. This project will be happening, and they will try to do their best to educate the communities that are going to be impacted by these changes." This statement implies that our community's comments will not be taken into consideration going forward. Well, in the absence of this education, we have sought education on our own. We do not believe cutting down 500 trees within a two-mile stretch of riverbank or removing riparian habitat will do one thing to make us safer, especially in terms of erosion. We feel that this project being pushed upon us will make us less safe and will destroy this wonderful gift of nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Like Nancy, I would like to take two minutes to talk about the upcoming erosion control projects, especially Contract 3B. The comment period for the 2023 supplemental reports for the Lower American River Common Features Project 2016 Flood Risk Management Report closed last Friday. We know that the number of comments submitted to the Corps of Engineers was substantial. Now, back in 2016, there were comments on the initial project report noting the absence of consideration of beaches, hiking trails, and other outstandingly remarkable values that characterize the American River Parkway. These recreational features are still absent from the '23 supplemental environmental reports. Likewise, in 2016, the Corps had a panel of experts review their erosion analysis. Their report recommended the Corps collect more soil borings due to a high degree of variability in the bed materials. No new borings were noted in the '23 supplemental reports. In 2022, the SAFCA Annual Report noted the Folsom Dam Water Control Manual will be updated when the Folsom Dam Raze Project is completed, which will be sometime in 2027. With the Raze, studies show that in a 200-year flood, the discharges into the American River will not exceed 115,000 cubic feet per second, far below the 160,000 cubic feet per second flows that are used in the 2016 project. So the report upon which all this erosion control work is based is over eight years old. The '23 supplemental reports contain the same deficiencies as 2016. Eight years is too long to go without conducting a new reevaluation. Since then, more advanced hydraulic modeling has been developed, and that modeling was based on research conducted by Stony Brook University on our very own American River. Many public and agency comments have recommended the inclusion of this new modeling. So as you review comments, we say, slow down. Our levees are not crumbling. Take Contract 3B out of the project now. We don't need to make any more of the Parkway look like the area down by Campus Commons and SAC State. Let's get more borings, run new models, engineer with nature, and design a more targeted, data-driven, evidence-based approach for the contract. We can have flood protection, erosion control, and a vibrant, wild, and scenic American River without destroying acres of vegetation and hundreds of trees for generations to come.
Can you wrap it up? Thank you.
Good morning. How is everyone? I'm Sarah Mattson, a resident of Sacramento County and New California State's Rural Sacramento County Chair. Last year, I sent you, the Board of Supervisors, the sheriff, and the registrar of voters by email, by registered mail, and then we read in person the letter made public by Arizona Senate Majority Leader Sonny Borelli, revealing that all electronic voting systems with components produced in countries considered adversaries to the United States must be halted to ensure a safe voting system and protect the sovereign rights of every citizen. In the folder presented to you that you just got, you got another copy of this letter. New Califor- California then stepped up and began a petition campaign at the tail end of last year, signed by almost 800 citizens. We, the people of your county, demand that you stop using voting machines for all future elections. In that folder, you also receive photocopies of these petitions with the cover letter. The originals were sent by certified mail to our sheriff. The great state of New California then organized the first-ever demo election on January 27th, voting in person on paper. That the demo elections were a huge success, and here are the results. New California was able to tally just under 1,000 ballots simultaneously in 20 minutes across the state. The quickest tallying times were 16 to 17 seconds per ballot. Using the Colorado method, even if we doubled the tallying time to 32 seconds per ballot, each 1,200 voter precinct can have those 1,200 ballots tallied simultaneously in less than three hours after the last voter cast his vote. And the entire state's results will be posted on election night, same-day results. With our clear ballot boxes and an observable tally method, the voters experience a complete, transparent election from start to finish. No part of the election process was hidden from the voters. All California state county boards need to recognize that the elections belong to we, the citizens, not the county officials, and certainly not state or federal entities. The citizens demand that the control of their elections be returned to them immediately and that hand counting in small precincts be reinstated immediately. I ask you to please put this as a full agenda item at your next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mattson.
We have much more to present. Please, this two minutes is just egregious to our First Amendment rights.
Thank you, but you're taking time away from others.
And we do ask, return elections back to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. Jim Reeves, interim Senator, New State of California, and voting. The citizens demand that the control of their elections be returned to them and that the hand counting in small precincts be reinstated immediately. How much more money each county will save by removing the electronics from our voting system is astounding. Return our elections back to we, the people. Demand that this topic be brought up as a full agenda, and then at the next board meeting, we have much more data to present, and the two-minute limit of public remark impedes our First Amendment right and free speech and the right to express fully our grievance. I agree with Sarah in everything she said. This is an excerpt from the Declaration of the 12th Constitutional Default dated June or January 30th, 2024, Count Eight Election Treason. Because of the 2018 midterm election, the 2021 recall election, and the 2022 midterm election all lost 1 to 1 balloting with the help of fraudulent electronic election system and algorithm and the actions of the globalist cartels and the CCP. A dictator was installed to oversee the province of California. Now, with the help of the federal courts in the state of Georgia and their unwitting corrupt Secretary of State Brad Raffensperger, the evidence is clear that the world to see now how the selected treasonous governor of the province of California and thousands of down-ballot corrupt elected officials turned the once-great state of California into a Nazi-communist totalitarian province. The election case pits an election integrity nonprofit and a handful of Georgia voters against the Secretary of State's office. They claim that the state's computerized voting machines face an unacceptable risk of being hacked, which infringes on the constitutional rights of the voters. The case has already made history. After Totenberg ordered the state in 2019 to replace its previous voting machines from Diebold election system, her ruling came after plaintiffs highlighted the touchscreen machine's vulnerability to being hacked. In response, Georgia brought the Dominion machines and began using them in June of 2020 presidential primary. With the Dominion machine voters...
Please, please wrap up, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Lynn Reeves? Good morning.
With the Dominion machines, voters use a touchscreen, also called a ballot marking device, to make their choices. Then they print out their ballots, which have which have a QR code that the scanner reads to record the tally votes. During the six-year case, computer scientists serving as experts for plaintiffs have uncovered multiple specific that specific ways that both that both the current Dominion and previous Diebold voting systems are vulnerable to hacking. The solution, the plaintiffs argue, is to have voters mark paper ballots by hand, as nearly 70% of voters do in the rest of the country. The ballots themselves, not just a QR code, would then be scanned to the and the procedure known as a risk-limiting audit would be used to verify the results. Georgia is one of a handful of states that uses the same election system for all of its registered voters statewide. That means any problem, whether due to hacking or human error, could affect nearly 8 million votes. Many other states use a patchwork of systems. In June 2023, the federal district court up for the Northern District of Georgia unsealed the so-called 96-page Haldeman Report, the security analysis of Georgia's image-casting X ballot marking devices. University of Michigan professor of computer science and engineering J. Alex Haldeman and security researcher and assistant professor at Auburn University Drew Springle collaborated on the report and demonstrated in court how Dominion machines are hacked and their tabulations are easily altered to select any individual for the office. In the in the Georgia courtroom on January 19th, 2024, J. Alex Haldeman demonstrated in explicit detail to the court and to the world how easy it is to hack the Dominion voting voting systems and alter the votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
Olga?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Olga Herman. Following an audit of the elections of 2018, 2021, and 2022, utilizing data provided by each California county and the Secretary of State's office, it is obvious an algorithm was used to create weighted vote values in the Dominion and other vote tabulation devices by those who facilitated the selection of the governor. The evidence in the Georgia federal court resented by J. Alex Haldeman overwhelmingly supports the use of an algorithm to facilitate the corrupt election of the governor. The fraudulent election system does not function without the help and support of state and county employees who either knowingly or unwittingly have worked together to perpetuate the corrupt election system. It's also known that the Secretary of State of the state of Georgia, Brad Raffensperger, has visited Nevada and contacted numerous California county clerks and state officials to support their actions, to continue a false narrative to the citizens of New California State and California State that the election systems are all fine. We now know that Raffensperger, California County, and state officials' narrative is a deliberate lie. The fraudulent California election system goes back 30 years, yet the most egregious era between 2018 to 2022 must be addressed. This will not be addressed by the current totalitarian communist government of California unless we, the people, act and demand the decertification of the 2018 to 2022 elections now. There are legal ways to demand decertification and, at the same time, force counties to utilize paper ballot same-day elections, which was successfully demonstrated January 27, 2024, by the great state of New California. This is an excerpt from the 157 declarations that were served to the Sacramento County Registrar of Voters yesterday.
Please wrap up, Ms. Herman. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Melanie? Or I'm sorry, did I say that right? Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Significance of the foundational truths. In my request to you, the significance of America being a constitutional republic is that the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. Any reported law, statute, code, regulation, rule, mandate, or policy which opposes and/or violates the Constitution in any way whatsoever is unlawful, null, and void. No bureaucrat, politician, or person acting in an official governmental capacity has any legal authority to restrict the constitutional rights of any law-abiding citizen, nor alter the count of the citizen's vote. Do you agree? The follow the foundational, also foundational to our constitutional republic, is that the process of voting must be free, fair, and accurate. Do you agree? The 2022, or excuse me, the 2020 presidential election and all elections since then were touted by governments at all levels as free, fair, and the most secure elections in history. Since November 2020, little by little, the evidence has come out that these elections are not free, not fair, nor secure. For example, every county registrar in the in every county in the county in the country, excuse me, represented that the voting machines were not connected to the Internet. Since then, it has been universally admitted that the voting machines were connected to the Internet, either by cable or by Wi-Fi. While counties maintain a log of those who physically access the individual machines in person, there is no record of unauthorized access to voting machines and Wi-Fi during non-business hours, not while actually voting machines, while actually counting votes. Do you agree? Do you agree? Since before November 2020 elections, registrar voters in each county nationwide represented the voting machines could not be and were not hacked.
Can you please wrap up?
One more sentence, please. Did you or the registrar voters in your county ever make such a representation to anyone at any time? If so, to whom and when? Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty?
Good morning.
Morning.
Are you aware that in the federal district court in Georgia, there is a case named Curling et al. versus Brad Rassenberger et al., Number 117 CV 102989-AT? Brad Raffensperger is the Secretary of State for Georgia. Are you aware that during the trial in the above-named case, University of Michigan Professor Dr. Jay Alex Haldeman was able to hack an electronic voting machine with only a ballpoint pen and a card and alter the vote totals in open court as the judge watched? Are you aware that the machine hacked by Dr. Haldeman is the same type of voting machine? The same type used in this county? Georgia's Secretary of State Brad Rassenberger has jointly met with the California Secretary of State Shirley M. Weber and registrars of voters from all California counties. Did you participate in any way in these meetings or this meeting? Are you willing to discuss with us exactly what was discussed in that meeting or those meetings? Are there any memos and/or emails that mention the meeting mentioned in number five? And what was discussed? What, if anything, was decided? Any tasks assigned? And/or any plan of action? Are you willing to disclose any such memos and emails by this demand for information and without order of the court? Are you aware in the federal and state laws that there is something called racketeering influenced corrupt organizations Rico?
Please wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good morning. I'm Michael Rivers.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'll just finish her paragraph. Are you aware that voters in this county generally, and me specifically, have been damaged by the collusion between Mr. Raffensperger, California Secretary of State Weber, and one or more registers of voters concerning what we now know as a false narrative of the alleged integrity of the elections from November 2020 to present? We, at our church, have been talking about the elections, and as a California citizen, I was born and raised in California, it frightens me that our elections are turning into like a Third World country where we can't trust them. I mean, we used to always blindly trust that the elections were fair. And the more and more we see like 2000 Mules movie or the one Let My People Go that we watched recently, it was like, holy smokes, I can't believe it that our country is going that way with the being corrupt. And I used to always, you know, look at Mexico and go, those poor people there, the country's so corrupt that the people don't have a chance. The ones who live there, they're sweet people, good people. My oldest brother retired, moved there. He was a doctor. He said, "The people here are so sweet, but the ones in charge are so corrupt, and that's why they're in such a bad state." And I always thought, thank God I was born in the United States, you know, of America, where that's not happening. And now, it makes me want to cry to see what's happening in our government. And I don't know if, you know, we have some good people in our government that are running and taking charge and trying, they're godly people who are trying to do the right thing. But it sure scares me when we see the corruption take over and people put in power that we didn't vote for. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers.
Hi, I'm Pastor Jed Delane from Calvary Solid Ground, and I want to read something I wrote here. "Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. As a pastor and leader of a church in Sacramento County, it is part of my responsibility to speak of the things that affect the members of the congregation God has allowed me to oversee. When it comes to something as important and essential as to the freedoms given to us in the Constitution, we must make sure that there is trust in the system. Without that trust, we cannot be at peace in the results of those that we choose to represent us. The Bible instructs us that the church of the living God is the pillar and ground of the truth, and that we are to meditate on whatever things are true, whatever things are noble, and whatever things are just. We are also told to abstain from every form of evil. And Jesus told us Himself that blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, and let your yes be yes and your no no, for whatever is more than these is from the evil one. We have been given the great privilege to live in the freest nation that to ever exist in the world and to be citizens governed by the people for the people. This cannot continue if we have no trust in our elections. We are here asking you to please return us to the place where we have full trust in our process and that we can know without a doubt that our vote counts. We want to thank you again for taking the time to let us voice our concerns, and you will all be in my prayers that God will grant you the wisdom needed to manage the affairs of this county. I will leave you with Proverbs 14:34, righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. God bless you, and thank you."
Thank you, sir.
That concludes your off-agenda comments.
Okay. Next item, please.
Okay, for your consent matters, items two through 51. For item 14, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 4.63, Title IV of the Sacramento County Code relating to regulation of shopping carts and repealing Chapter 9.76, Title IX of the Sacramento County Code relating to shopping carts, waiving full reading and continuing to March 26th for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any members of the board that would like to address at this time item on the consent calendar? Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Item 14, just a brief comment.
Okay. Let me get to that for you. Item 14, oh, that's the ordinance that I just introduced.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just very briefly, I just want to thank staff for working on this. I'm looking specifically at our code enforcement chief, Barry Chamberlain over there. I know he's spent a lot of time working on updating this shop. And staff, thank you, Barry, updating the ordinance, making it consistent with state law, requiring a little more accountability from the business community. And I especially appreciate that you engaged with the retailers and the merchants about this and the impact it'll have on them. I think this is something sometimes we overlook. It's kind of a quality-of-life thing in some of these unincorporated communities, but I think this really goes a long way to show the county is more focused on these communities and removing shopping carts and causing some blight in the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment on item number two, I believe it was.
Item two? Let me grab that one. Adopt the third amendment.
No, excuse me, item three.
Three, okay. Authorization to appoint Sylvester Fidel as Deputy County Executive of Administrative Services.
Thank you. All I wanted to do is just call out this item to say congratulations for such an auspicious recognition to be promoted up at the rate you're collecting job duties and titles. Pretty soon, you're going to look like that one-man band with a tambourine tied to his leg and a drum in one hand and a trumpet in the other. So, slow down a little bit, maybe.
Thank you, Supervisor. We will have opportunity to comment soon on that item.
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. There's no other board comment? Is there a motion? We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Supervisors. As Supervisor Hume pointed out, you did have an action in your item, action number three, which was to authorize the appointment of Sylvester Fidel as the Deputy County Executive over administration. Just, you know, Sylvester's extensive background includes leadership experience in human resources, technology, procurement, contracts, construction, capital improvement, and budget management. Sylvester has earned his doctorate in business administration, his master's in public administration, and also, I'm sorry, master's in public administration, a bachelor's in organizational management. And as Supervisor Hume pointed out, he has a couple of tambourines and drums and harmonicas in his quiver. He has been an outstanding director for Department of Personnel Services. He's also been the interim director for General Services, and I'm looking forward to having him come on board with the senior executive team. I couldn't forget to thank Amanda Thomas for her role. She's stepped into that position for about a month now. She's had that position, and I've heard nothing but great things from the directors in that agency about how she's been so open and helpful in helping them get through their process. So, thank you, Amanda. Lastly, I just want to thank, we've had a lot of folks apply for this position, and many of them are outstanding internal candidates. And this was not an easy decision on who to pick for this position. However, it was a fantastic problem to have, to have all these fantastic internal candidates. But I think it just reinforces what we already know, that the quality of our leaders in Sacramento County are second to none. So, with that, I'd like to invite Sylvester up and see if he has a couple of words to share and play a couple of tunes for you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I stand before you, just like I did 28 months ago when I was appointed into my current position as the Director of Personnel Services. A long time ago, I learned very quickly that professional excellence and professional growth isn't driven by performance alone. It's not just the totality of your actions and your hard work. It's everyone that has trusted you in that process. Excellence is measured by your compassion, understanding, kindness, your ability to walk with people, recognize great people, and be able to share the podium with those that actually support you each and every day. And that's why today I am grateful to stand before you and honored to be able to report to you in a different capacity, starting in a week, and to also recognize my leader, the CEO of the county, Dave Villanueva, who over the last, the past 26 months, has been a great leader to me. Your compassionate leadership is something I take very dearly, and I want to say thank you for that. When you first notified me of my appointment a couple of weeks ago, I was gracefully received by the county executive team. Your support was just outstanding. You probably don't recognize what it meant to me, but it meant a lot, to be able to be accepted into the esteemed leadership team, so I say thank you. When I came to the county 26 months ago, it was a significant undertaking that my counterparts, the department heads, were gracious in accepting me into their fold. They were patient with me in my process. They recognized me even when I didn't deserve the recognition. They encouraged me every single step of the way, so I say thank you to my team. You guys have been outstanding, and I'm really grateful to be able to work with the caliber of people the county has. And the cornerstone to my success today is because of my hard work, is the team, the amazing team that has stood beside me, behind me, in front of me, that have been candid each and every step of the way in advising me on how to make the county better, how to make the departments better. And that's my DPS team. I know some of them are right here. These are my rock stars. Over the last four months, I've added a different team of rock stars, which are the DJs team. But I tell you, these amazing employees are the folks who give me the courage and the empowerment, and quite frankly, the excitement to show up every day. So, I'm always very grateful. I'm not walking away from you. I'm just going to be a few steps up, and I would continue to support you. But lastly, I want to recognize the cornerstone of my success, the rock that supports me each and every day, and that's my family. I want to thank my daughter Alexis, my son Austin, and my youngest daughter, Evian Lauren. These are my support cast. They're very frank with me. They will tell me the truth. Most times, I don't want to hear it, but they would share those with me anyway. But I really want to recognize them for their continual support and the love they've shown me, just like myself and their mom has shown them. And finally, I want to thank my spouse of over 27 years, Marilyn, who isn't here today, but I know she's watching. And you said, "Be careful, don't say the wrong thing." I hope I haven't said the wrong thing just yet.
You just did.
But I just want to thank them all. I want to thank everyone that has been a part of my life, because your support plays a role in who I am. And I'm going to walk away by repeating what I tell my team each and every day. Leadership is in rocket science. It's simple. You could read all the leadership books you want, but the cornerstone to leadership, the secret recipe, is treat your staff and colleagues the way you want your loved ones treated by their supervisors and friends. Then you got the recipe right. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
Sylvester, I wasn't surprised when I heard that you were being promoted, and I'm not surprised that the deputy county executives welcome you in a warm way. You're so strong, and you're a tough negotiator, but such a kind man, and you are an inspiration. And I'm so excited, and I want to congratulate you on your promotion and wish you God's blessings moving forward. I know, I feel like it'll be hard to fill your shoes in your current capacity, but I know someone great will come along, and I'm excited that you're moving into this leadership role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Sylvester, I just want to say, you know, I've always been a believer that you never hold somebody back in their career because they're very, very good at what they're currently doing. That's a temptation. And, you know, as Supervisor Frost said, you know, sorry to see you leave in one regard, but so happy to see that you're going to expand your portfolio and the work that you do on behalf of the county. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Look forward to continuing to work with you on a different level, and going to add, with all of the instruments that you play, going to add one more, and that's you are now officially the board chair speechwriter. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Next item, please.
Okay. Item 52 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Manya Gilliam on the occasion of her retirement.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Rami Zakaria, the County Chief Information Officer, and it is my honor today to recognize Manya Gilliam on the occasion of her retirement. Manya started with the County of Sacramento Department of Technology in 1990 at the Communication Center. She was a communication operation dispatcher. Manya always excelled at every job that she did. She took it to heart. She trained newcomers. She put procedures together for those to follow. In 2008, Manya was promoted to Information Technology Analyst Training with the Enterprise Content Management System, where she worked with many county departments on automating their business needs and implementing document management systems. In 2010, Manya was promoted again to an Information Technology Analyst with the same team. In March of 2022, Manya was promoted yet one more time to supervising Information Technology Analyst, supervising the Department of Technology Project Management Office, where she oversees project portfolios of more than 20 active projects at any given time. Manya is an outstanding supervisor, takes difficult projects head-on, and leads D-Tech staff to complete these projects successfully and on time. As Manya preparing for retirement, she just finished the last project that she's working on. This last Sunday, we decommissioned one of the old artifact in technology. It's a domain, it's a PWA domain that has been in place for over 30 years. Sunday morning, there was 54 participants on a Teams meeting that were working collaboratively together to make sure that everything is set up correctly. And as we come in on Monday morning, the results were just astounding, and that's in no short order due to Manya and her diligence and commitment to work. So, with all of that said, congratulations. We all adore you. We wish you were not retiring, you know? But I know Manya wants to spend a lot of time with her family, with her husband, Michael, who used to work for the County of Sacramento Department of Technology as well, too. Each year, have a lot of travel coming on and a lot of fun things, so congratulations. I'll give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Rami. First of all, that PWA project, wait, I know how to operate this. The PWA project and all the projects that I've done, they're all efforts of a team, so I won't, I will not take credit. I will say that I've enjoyed working with the team. I will say that I've enjoyed working with the team. I just wanted to say a few words. As Rami said, I started 34 years ago in 1990 as an on-call temporary dispatcher with the County of Sacramento's Communication Center. It is one of the most hard-working but least-seen places in this county, and I'm honored to have started there. I was 20 years young. I was a new single mom. I needed to pay rent and it was a temporary job. I offered to work any shift possible. I worked really hard. I got hired permanently within six months. After several years, I went back to school, in part to the county's tuition reimbursement program. I applied for several jobs within the Department of Technology. I got my big break when Jerry Gray hired me as a .NET developer. Eventually, I ended up working as a business analyst because I missed people. Computer programming and computers all day is not what it's cracked up to be. If I look familiar to some of you Board members, you may remember me from several years that I used to sit in this room, working closely with Flo, the Clerk of the Board's staff, Metro Cable, and Brenda. A couple of years ago, I did get a chance to lead the project management team under Karina Zollers. I have been so happy in this position that it makes it very difficult to leave. So if you're counting, that's three different careers in the time that I've been here in the Department of Technology. While working for the county, I met some of my best friends, including my now-husband of 24 years, Michael, who retired last year. And many of those friends are here today or watching from home. The county has not just been a job for me, it's been a career, it's been a family. Although it will be hard to leave, it's time for me to spend quality moments with my parents, with my kids, my daughter Christine and her husband Josh, and my husband. I know that young people do not tend to look at the county as a career opportunity. I'm here today and the only reason that I asked to speak to you today, to show them that it's a great choice, not only for their career, but for their work-life balance. I want people to hear that if you are tired of not being valued, of private companies working you until you burn out, this is a great opportunity at this county, especially the Department of Technology. The county is a place where you can do almost any type of career, build a network of friends and family, and then eventually earn a great retirement. I encourage you not to miss out. SacCountyJobs.net.
Congratulations. Yes. And can we ask her family to come down, please?
We'll be quick.
Michael, come on.
Okay, item 53 is the Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming March 2024 as Afghan-American Heritage Month.
Okay, would Zuhail Bahaduri and Lita Azim join me at the podium?
Members of the board and the public, I'm proud today to celebrate or begin the celebration of Afghan-American Heritage Month. It's commonly observed from March 1st to March 31st during the Afghan New Year, known as Nowruz, pardon me, in Afghanistan, which marks the arrival of spring and symbolizes light, rebirth, new beginnings, nature, love, beauty, as well as the first day of the year of Afghanistan's official calendar. Afghan-American Heritage Month provides a special opportunity for Sacramento County residents to honor and celebrate the profound and enduring contribution of our Afghan-American community to the social, cultural, economic, and civic life of our country and the United, of our county and the United States. The Afghan community in Sacramento County represents a proud tapestry of individuals and families who trace their roots to Afghanistan, bringing their unique traditions, histories, and experiences to our community. We recognize that celebrating Afghan-American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to promote cultural awareness, inclusivity, and unity among all residents of Sacramento County, fostering a sense of belonging and understanding among our diverse communities. And I also want to make a personal note that many people of the Afghan-American community in Sacramento came here not by choice, but by necessity. And I'm proud to be a Sacramento County Supervisor in a county that we have welcomed more Afghanistan refugees than just about any other community in America. Not just because it shows who we are, but it shows who they are, because we welcome them into our homes, into our hearts, and with open arms. And with that, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. All right. What an exciting day for the Afghan-American community. My name is Zuhail Bahaduri. I'm a co-founder and executive director of the Five Pillars Organization, and we aid in the resettlement of refugees. In California, at least 66,000 people are of Afghan descent. And Sacramento County has the largest Afghan-born population in the U.S. by county, with nearly 10,000 Afghans calling the capital city home. California has historically been a leader in welcoming Afghans. I was born and raised in Northern California to Afghan refugees, and I've witnessed impacts firsthand when the state and communities work together to build an inclusive, welcoming, safe environment that provides real opportunities to thrive. Since 2021, the state has taken on more Afghan families than any other state. And since then, my nonprofit, the Five Pillars Organization, has taken on the role of welcoming Afghan allies across Northern California to ensure Afghans continue to receive dignified resettlement. And in Sacramento, we work closely in partnership with CARE, the Council on American-Islamic Relations, of which I'm pleased to have with us here today in support of this proclamation. We are so grateful to our local and state partners for making this possible, and today, thanks to your leadership and through this proclamation, we are further deepening our appreciation of the rich tapestry of Afghan heritage and recognizing Afghan-Americans for their profound contributions across the state. Whether they be a naturalized U.S. citizen, a first-generation Afghan-American in college, or a newcomer arrival from 2021, this proclamation is a moment to celebrate our stories of resilience of Afghan roots with American and Californian horizons. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Lita Azim. I was born and raised in the Bay Area, California, but actually I have a very soft spot in my heart for Sacramento, actually, because I spent about three years growing up in Elk Grove, California, where I became a Kings fan. So can I get to light the beam? Wow, thank you, thank you. I am the daughter of Afghan refugees who've come to California in search of safety and freedom. They have inspired my passion for giving back to both of my communities, Afghan and American. I co-founded Afghans for a Better Tomorrow National Community and Advocacy Organization with my colleagues, Arash Azizadad and Halima Wali, and we started this work frontlines in 2021. So what does that mean? It means anything from helping folks find a way out of Afghanistan, connecting Afghans to critical legal services, giving out thousands in food and cash assistance, donating over estimated $600,000 worth of mutual aid, and finally advocating for Afghans on Capitol Hill. Afghans have made a tremendous difference in the country and in this county. We are business owners, musicians, directors, community organizers, appointed and elected officials. Northern California in particular has given my community the space to not only feel safe, but also to thrive and make the life they've always imagined for themselves. As mentioned by the supervisor, Sacramento County has over 10,000 Afghans, and we're so appreciative of the board for their acceptance of March being Afghan-American Heritage Month. And as mentioned earlier, March is a very special month for us. It's the arrival of spring, new beginnings, a new year, better weather, and so today's resolution is both an acknowledgment of our community's contribution and a signal that this is another step in the right direction for our community and for our diaspora, so thank you.
Okay, I'll get these out to everybody. Okay, for item 54, this is the 2025 One-Year Action Plan: Federal Programs, Allocation Process, and Consolidated Plan Workshop Number One.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Programs Manager at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Today's presentation will be the first workshop for the County of Sacramento's 2025 Annual Action Plan and the Consolidated Plan for Federal Entitlement Grant Programs. The purpose of today's workshop will be to provide information on the different federal programs, the planning process, and also to provide an opportunity to solicit project ideas and feedback, and will be the first of a few opportunities over the next few months for you to provide input. As a high-level overview, SHRA has been delegated authority by the county to administer the formula program grants received from HUD on their behalf. These grants include the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOM, and Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG. These are all entitlement grants, meaning that HUD uses a formula to determine how much we receive each year. Further on, I'll describe the type of activities that each of these programs cover. As part of accepting these grants, there are certain steps that HUD requires us to take. First, HUD requires grant recipients to complete a consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan that identifies the community needs and establishes a long-term strategy to meet those needs. The next consolidated plan will cover the years 2025 through 2029, so this year we will be undergoing development of that consolidated plan. The process will involve extensive community outreach and consultation with relevant stakeholders and service providers. The consolidated plan will be adopted in October and must be submitted to HUD by November 15th. In addition to the consolidated plan, HUD also requires that we prepare an annual action plan, which identifies specific activities and projects that will be undertaken to meet the objectives identified in the consolidated plan. We have already kicked off our consolidated planning process by hiring a consultant who has excellent experience in leading the development of a consolidated plan and are progressing with creating our community engagement strategy. We are envisioning a three-fold engagement strategy. First, we'll provide opportunities for public input at public hearings and by attending and possibly setting up booths in affected neighborhoods at local community events. Second, we'll develop and distribute a resident survey. This survey is still in the design phase and will be active starting this spring. Lastly, we will establish virtual stakeholder meetings to gather input from service providers, community groups, and other relevant parties. We welcome any feedback you have on the proposed engagement strategy. These next few slides will focus on the annual action plan and how we determine which projects or activities to fund, particularly focusing on CDBG funds. First, the consolidated plan identifies objectives for the best use of these grant funds, and we want to make sure the activities we fund align with these objectives. This slide shows the objectives that were developed in the last consolidated plan. Overall, they are to help create ladders of opportunity for our low-to-moderate-income residents through three different avenues: affordable housing, public facilities and infrastructure, as well as public services. You'll see these three different categories reflected in how CDBG funds are distributed in the action plan. In addition to meeting the consolidated plan objectives, we must also ensure the projects meet a HUD national objective. The vast majority of CDBG expenditures must meet the national objective of being an activity that benefits low- or moderate-income persons, which can be accomplished three ways. First, it can be an activity that benefits an area of low-to-moderate income, which means it needs to be in a location that is primarily residential and at least 51% of the residents need to be low-to-moderate income. Second, we can provide funding directly to low- or moderate-income clientele, which is individuals or households at or below 80% area median income. And as an example in this category, we usually fund shelters or Meals on Wheels. Lastly, we can also fund low- or moderate-income housing, which helps to provide housing to individuals or households at or below 80% area median income. This is usually provided in the form of gap financing for affordable housing rehab projects. In addition to meeting a national objective, CDBG projects must also be an eligible activity. The broad categories of major eligible activities include public facilities and infrastructure, so this is things such as parks, playgrounds, ADA curb ramps, pedestrian improvements, things like that. Public services, so this could be Meals on Wheels, shelter operations. Acquisition, for example, this could be for a property for public housing, or I'm sorry, a public facility or housing. Clearance or remediation activities, so this could be for cleaning up a site that could be used for affordable housing. Homeownership assistance, planning and administrations, these would be staff costs, and environmental studies. I also want to highlight some major ineligible activities. So these would be general government buildings and expenses, operating and maintenance activities, purchasing of construction equipment and furnishings, income payments, new housing construction, political and religious activities, supplanting of funds, and regional parks and facilities. Before I move on to the next few slides, I also want to note that there are other things we have to take into consideration when evaluating projects to include in our action plan. One of the more important factors is project readiness. We have an obligation to HUD to spend funds in a timely manner, so it is important to select projects that are ready to go and expend funds quickly. We usually like to see funds spent down between 12 to 18 months or sooner if possible. This slide shows the estimated funding entitlements for the county for 2025. We typically receive the final approved amount from HUD around April of each year, so for planning purposes, we base this year's entitlement estimate on what the most recently approved allocation was, anticipating no change in entitlement. For 2025, we are estimating we will get about 5.9 million for CDBG, and we already went over what activities the CDBG funds can be used for. For HOM, we expect about 3.6 million, and these funds usually go to acquisition and construction of multifamily affordable housing projects. For ESG, we estimate about 500,000, and these funds will go to help people who are homeless, for example, through rental assistance or rapid rehousing, as well as operations for emergency shelters. Overall, we estimate we will get about 10 million total for these federal programs in the county.
Can I interrupt you there? I was a little slow on the uptake. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. If you can go back four slides, please.
Sorry, I was slow on the uptake.
Yeah, this one, I'm sorry, maybe it's three slides.
This one or the next one?
No, advance. There you go. So in terms of homeownership assistance, is direct subsidy for down payment assistance permitted?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And has that, is there a history of that occurring in Sacramento County?
I believe we have in the past, or we are currently. In the past, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, thank you. And just real quick, so the 10 million, is this just the entitlement allocation for unincorporated Sacramento County and the other cities besides the city of Sacramento?
Yes, so this is both the county and the agreement cities, which is I believe what you're asking about.
Okay, that was one question. And then the other, the slide you have about ineligible, major ineligible activities for regional parks, has that always been the case? Because, oh, it has, okay, I see Christine nodding there, because I thought that we had tried to fund some programs in the past for infrastructure, capital projects in our regional parks. Is that not the case?
So we can in parks, but not regional parks, because CDBG funds should be used at more of a local or a neighborhood benefit, so not regional.
Okay, so our regional parks, if it's a specific park, it's okay. Okay. Thank you, Christine, I see you nodding. Thank you.
Okay, where was I? Okay, where was I? So we went over our estimated entitlements. So we're anticipating a total of about 10 million within the county, and that includes our agreement cities, which we show here. So for CDBG, the annual entitlement is divided up among several different categories. This table shows how those funds may be utilized in 2025, based on that 5.9 million total estimate projection. For estimating purposes, we usually allocate the maximum allowable for both public services and administration, and then work backwards from there to determine how much to allocate in the other categories. We're allowed to allocate a maximum of 15% to public services, so this is about 885,000. And again, these funds usually go to fund homeless activities and Meals on Wheels. A maximum of 20% can go to planning and admin, so this is about 1.18 million. This is used to pay for staffing and admin costs, as well as planning activities for the consolidated plan. And then 415,000 will go to the agreement cities, and these are non-entitlement cities within the urban county that we administer funds for. Then 2 million, we are estimating, will go to infrastructure and public facility improvements, and about 1.27 million to affordable housing. And these funds usually go to multifamily rehab or home repairs for low-to-moderate-income homeowners. The last category is capital reserve, and this is a contingency bucket for which we've reserved about 150,000. And as an example of types of infrastructure projects that CDBG funds can be used for, the next few slides show which projects have been funded in each district for the current consolidated plan period from 2020 through 2024. The columns identify the project, the years the projects were funded, as well as the total amount, and then we'll see the total amount funded in each district at the bottom. Overall, we invested over 13.7 million in CDBG towards infrastructure improvements over the last consolidated planning period. I won't read through each individual project, but as you will see, this represents quite a breadth of investments in infrastructure projects and types of projects that we typically fund. You will also see that some districts have more projects than others, and this is because projects must be located in an eligible low-to-moderate-income area, and some districts have more eligible areas than others. This first slide shows District 1, and in this district, we funded a park improvement project, as well as some ADA and sidewalk improvements, and a bathroom-park sewer line. In District 2, some projects included streetlights, ADA improvements, some bicycle and pedestrian improvements, lighting, a park shade structure, and an outdoor fitness court. And you can also see here on this slide that some projects span multiple districts. For example, the countywide ADA curb ramp project is in both Districts 2 and 3. For District 3, we funded some ADA curb ramps, several pedestrian sidewalk and street improvements, some park improvements, a gazebo, and volleyball courts. In District 4, we did a complete streets project, ADA improvements at a park, and some streetlights. And in District 5, which is a pretty large district with low-to-moderate-income area, there were a lot of projects. We funded streetlights, some roof projects for a community center and a Mather community campus, two restroom projects, street and walkway improvements, park sports courts, and baseball field improvements. And this district also does include some of those agreement cities. The final slide outlines the process for moving forward to complete the consolidated plan, as well as identify projects for the 2025 Annual Action Plan. This month, SHRA has already initiated the process with county staff to start thinking about the projects for the next year. We are also holding our first public action plan workshops at the Commission and County Board of Supervisors, which is this meeting today. Now through May, we will continue discussions with county staff to identify projects, confirm if they are eligible, and during this time, we'll also be hosting our consolidated plan workshops with stakeholders and begin public engagement. In June, we should have a draft list of projects for 2025 identified, and we'll head back to Commission and Board of Supervisors with that draft list. And we'll also hold our first public hearing for the consolidated plan. June through August, we'll continue to meet with county staff as needed to finalize projects, and we'll also continue with consolidated plan workshops and community outreach. Then in August, we should have started circulating that draft consolidated plan, and we'll hold our second consolidated plan public hearing. At this point, the action plan budget should be complete, and August through October, we'll be finalizing the consolidated plan and the action plan. Then we'll come back to the Commission and Board of Supervisors in October for approval of those two plans. Then we will finally submit those to HUD in November. So this concludes my presentation. Once again, we welcome any input you have for either the consolidated plan engagement process or for action plan project ideas, either now or you can reach out to us anytime between now and the next workshop, which is currently planned for June 11th. Thank you for your time. I'm open to questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, this is an informational item. Thank you very much. Obviously thorough.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
For your next item, you're acting as the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is authorizing the issuance of a multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 25 million for the financing of the multifamily rental housing project generally known as the Albert Einstein Residence Center, authorizing the execution and delivery of the indenture of trust, a financing agreement, a regulatory agreement, and declaration of restrictive covenants, a bond purchase agreement, an official statement, and other documents relating thereto, and approving other actions and matters relating thereto.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. In August 2023, the Board approved the issuance of tax-exempt mortgage revenue bonds for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and permanent financing for the Albert Einstein Residence Center. Staff is requesting approval of final bond documents related to the construction and financing of the project. This project rehabilitates the 78-unit senior residential community center located at 1935 Wright Street. Improvements will be provided in all units, including a full reconfiguration of eight units to meet the ADA accessibility requirements, and an upgrade to elevator systems. In addition, exterior improvements will include new roofing, lighting, trash enclosures, and central boilers. All units are currently subsidized by the project-based Section 8 HAP contract, which will be extended for an additional 20 years. The project will serve senior households earning between 30% and 60% of area median income. The developer of security properties and property management will be provided by the John Stewart Company. Resident services will be provided by communities advocating for resident empowerment or care. Care is a not-for-profit entity that will provide 20 hours of onsite services per week. The project's financing is expected to close in March, therefore, staff is recommending adoption of the final resolution and approval of the issuance of tax-exempt mortgage revenue bonds for the project, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I enthusiastically move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for item 56, this is a resolution approving the Sacramento International Airport SM Forward Art Plan.
Good morning, Supervisor Sheri Thompson, Deputy Director, Operations and Maintenance, Department of Airports. Today, we will be giving you a brief overview and asking for your approval of our SMF Forward Art Plan. The last time we were before you with this subject was in August. At that time, we were seeking approval for our SMF Forward budget and those art site locations, and we were seeking approval authorizing the department to negotiate and execute the art program services with Shelley Willis, both of which were approved at that time. Since then, we have been busily working with Shelley to develop our SMF Forward Art Plan, which you will see today, and is very similar to the Big Build Art Plan that we did back in 2011. Last year and early this year, Shelley provided each of you with briefings and updates on details and logistics of this finalized art plan. And following those briefings, we finalized this plan in late January, and today I am here with Shelley, who will quickly go over the plan, and then with your approval, we can quickly put this plan into action for our pedestrian walkway and parking garage, which are our two projects that are ready to break ground. With that, I would like to introduce Shelley Willis, the former manager of the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission Public Art Program. She managed the Sacramento County Art and Public Places Program, including one I mentioned earlier, the airport's Big Build Project. We are so happy that Shelley has agreed to work with us again on this, and we're looking forward to moving this forward. So Shelley.
You left off the lofty position of managing our TOT program every year.
That's true. That's a big one.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. It's good to be here. So, of course, acquiring art in the county is not new for you. You established a policy in 1983 that allocates 2% of new building construction for the purchase of art. And in that time, the county has acquired more than 300 works of art, including dozens of works at the Sacramento International Airport. This project, the SMF Forward project, it will be the largest public art project in the county's history. So the plan, there's lots of details in the plan, so I'm just going to give you a brief overview. But the plan, as Sheri said, is very similar to the Big Build or Terminal B Public Art Plan. It includes a vision, mission, statement for public art. It includes budgets. It includes priority sites for art. It includes policy around the acquiring of works through donations. It recommends maintenance and conservation and donation policies, and it identifies some alternative sites for existing artworks that may need to be relocated due to the construction projects. It also describes priorities for the endowment. So the mission and vision for the program at the airport is really, for me and the staff, is sort of the core guiding principles of what the artwork should do, not necessarily what it should be, but what it should accomplish. And what we want the artwork at the airport to accomplish, we've got quite a few things. So we want it to be, of course, of the highest artistic quality, but we want the work to consider the architectural design of each particular place where the artwork will be. We want it to contribute to the Sacramento International Airport's mission and vision, which I love, which is to put people at the center of every trip, every experience, every day, and be the most loved airport. We want the art to consider, we want the art to have the ability to function as a wayfinding anchor, which you know is super important. You know, when we arrive at an airport, we need to find our way quickly and easily and without stress, and we know that art can reinforce that experience. We want the art to be engaging and be delightful and interesting and fun and, you know, surprising and evoke curiosity. We want the work to build upon what makes this region different from not just this state or this nation, but the world. So we want it to be really, really distinctive. We want it to consider the idea of bringing the outside in. We want those artists to think about that same sort of mission that we had for Terminal B, which was to bring the outside in metaphorically. We want the work to be memorable and create a lasting impression of Sacramento as a destination. We want the work to be made of durable materials. We want the artists to understand, you know, that this is a place that gets used by thousands and thousands of people, and it needs to be sustainable over time. And we want the work, really importantly, to be located in the most high-traffic areas at the airport. So we are recommending the artworks be cited in five of the major construction projects at the airport, and those include the pedestrian walkway, the parking garage, which we all know is this giant building, the Concourse B expansion, the Ground Transportation Center, and the Consolidated Rental Car Facility. I'd first like to talk with you a little bit about the pedestrian walkway. It is, you know, it's a long, long building. It'll be, when it's built, 1,200, about 1,200 feet long and 50 feet wide. And we want the experience of walking through that to be engaging and interesting. So we've cited the work at two, three locations, at the south entrance to the pedestrian walkway, in the middle of the pedestrian walkway, and at the north entrance. And of course, people will be passing back and forth between their gates and, or, you know, to get to their gates and get back to the terminal. So the largest allocation on the interior of the buildings is for the hub site. That hub site in the center of the pedestrian walkway is really dramatic. It's got high ceilings, and we think it would be really great for something that is suspended and sculptural. The sites at the north and south entrances are really transition areas for the pedestrians, as I described, and we have allocated $500,000 each for these projects. As I said before, the Terminal B parking garage is, you know, a very substantial building. It is, you know, very, very visible. People driving into the airport will see it from a quarter of a mile away. It will be seen by pedestrians. You'll be able to see the garage when you're inside the terminal. So we really want the artists to focus on those sites on the building that are most visible, the south and the east sides.
Excuse me, Shelley?
Yes.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
So relative to Terminal B, I note that the location for the proposed art is, if I'm not mistaken, located on the south side of the building, which is facing away from the activity of the airport, or the principal activity of the airport. In other words, it's facing away from, you know, the terminal itself, the gates, the airfield. So what was the thought process there in terms of having it be a south placement versus a north placement?
Well, we do say that we want the artists to consider that east side as well, and if there's enough funding allocated, the other sides. But that entrance, that south entrance, is when, you know, you see it sort of as you're driving up. And then, yes, the east side is very important as well, because you will see it.
Oh, I'm not talking about the east side. I'm talking about north and south.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the illustration that's up there. On the left there, it says Terminal B Parking Garage, and I assume that gold dot is where the artwork would be located?
That's correct.
That's the south side of the parking garage, which is facing away from all, it's facing away from the terminal, the gates, all the activity of the airport. In other words, it's looking towards I-5, not towards the airport itself. So I'm just curious why we wouldn't maybe more purposefully place artwork that leads people and their attention towards their destination, which is all that activity to the north.
So, you know, as you're driving into the airport, it is this, you know, very dramatic, you know, view to that, to the facade of that building, and possibly the entrance to the building. And then we do say that we want to have the work wrap around to that space in between Terminal B and the parking garage to mark the entrances.
So the thought is here that the artwork would be intentionally south, you know, I don't know if it's south-facing, if that's the right term, but it's in the south part of that building, that parking garage structure for vehicular entrance? Okay, all right. That helps. Thank you.
So what you're seeing on the other side of this slide is the work that would be placed in, at the Concourse B. And this part of the project really excites me because it's that, you know, that place where you can really engage with the art and over, you have a little bit more time, you've, you know, you're at your gate, you can really look at the work up close, and you have a little bit of time. And, you know, it's also a place, because it's inside, that we can commission work that is perhaps a little bit more vulnerable and, you know, for two-dimensional artists to participate in this project. This part of the project is also specifically designed to engage artists that may not have made public art before. So photographers, not to say that we don't, we have a lot of photographers making work in the public realm, but in this case, specifically photographers and painters and artists that draw that work in a studio-type atmosphere and make large-scale work that could then be installed at the gates. And, you know, we're also thinking that there would be multiple opportunities, although we call out $500,000 for this project. we call out $500,000 for this project. We, I'm hoping that we can acquire a minimum of five, six, seven artworks for this site.
Is there, through the chair, is there some intention to have artworks rotate at this site?
We, not as part of this budget, but we have, when I get to the endowment, there is some, you know, some recommendations around the installation of temporary work as part, you know, funded through the proceeds of the endowment.
Got it. Thank you.
So, these next three sites are the Terminal A Walkway from the ground, from Terminal A to the Ground Transportation Center. So, if, as you get out of your, you know, come out of the airport and you're making your way to the Transportation Center, you're going to have to walk through the Terminal A garage. And so, we really felt that art could add to that experience and make the short, the distance seem shorter and, you know, make the experience more lively, and also help, again, with wayfinding, getting you from Terminal A to the Ground Transportation Center where you'll pick up your taxi or Uber or your bus. The other site is the Ground Transportation Center itself, and that, you know, resides in between Terminal, the two terminals, Terminal A Parking Garage and Terminal B. And we sort of envision that this could be one or more artworks at this site that really identifies, again, this place where, you know, meet me over here if you're, you know, if you're going to pick me up, meet me at the, you know, whatever the artwork is. And finally, the Consolidated Rental Car Facility. We've allocated $590,000 to that project, and, of course, that's the site where all the rental car services will be combined into one building, and we imagine that the artwork at that site would be an exterior artwork. So, the artist's selection process is completely aligned with what we did with Terminal B. The artists will be selected in an open call process. So, we'll release a request for qualifications and allow artists to apply, either if it's limited to a regional competition, then regionally and/or a national competition. Panels will be, individual panels will be convened for one or more of the projects. Those panels will consist of representatives from the airport community, a representative from the architectural or design team, in which the artwork will be placed, and then arts professionals from throughout the community. And when I say arts professionals, I mean curators, artists, you know, people who have had experience managing public art projects, directors of museums, gallerists, those sorts of folks.
Shelley, who makes those selections?
The panelists will review the artists and their designs.
No, no, I mean, who selects the panel members?
Staff will select the panel with input from the board, if you'd like. The criteria for selection is, again, very, very similar to Terminal B selection process criteria. Of course, the highest, you know, marks go to quality and artistic excellence. These are big budgets, so the ability of the artist to deal with a budget of these scale and this scale and their experience around creating large-scale public art projects is important, except, again, for that, the gates in Terminal B. The artist's knowledge and ability to work with permanent materials that will be sustainable, the willingness of the artist to consult with the design team. This is a very different process, as you may know, than working in a studio-type situation where, you know, you really have to collaborate, you know, with engineers and architects and, you know, contractors to ensure that your piece is successful.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I noticed on some previous slides, Shelley, that it's noted that it'll be a national search, or I guess the RF Keys will go out nationally. In the selection process, will there be, is there any contemplation of a scoring protocol or process that might somehow acknowledge or reward local artists?
It's not identified in the art plan, but yes, that is something that we would like to do, is give, you know, have a system that allows for that extra acknowledgement of those artists that live in the regional community.
I think that's extremely important because I think it certainly parallels kind of, especially what we're doing with our food concessionaires and, you know, celebrating our localness, so to speak, throughout the airport, and to have not just high-quality artwork that's of durable materials, but also, you know, featuring our local artists, I think, is part of that overall theme that I think is important for the airport.
Absolutely. The local art community know this community in a different way than artists living outside of the community, so that becomes really important. And you'll see in this graph that we do have three opportunities that are specifically for the regional community. There are, like I said, eight sites for art, and budgets within those sites ranging from $500,000 to the $1.75 million. Four of the sites are exterior, and four of the sites are interior sites. And, again, the overview of the budget, the total budget for the project is $11 million with $3 million being allocated to the endowment, $7.5 million for the design, fabrication, and installation of the artworks, and $500,000 for administration. That $7.5 million for art, for the artwork budgets includes a $750,000 contingency. I'd like to also say that any of the leftover contingencies from this project, I hope we manage it really well and have some, will be put into the, be eligible for the purchase of additional work or for the maintenance of the work over time. And finally, just the priorities for the endowment proceeds. The number-one priority, of course, is for the maintenance and conservation of the existing work, but proceeds may also be spent on education, public relations, documentation, historic videos about things, and, of course, this allocation to temporary installations, performance. This is a place where we can engage the performing art community in temporary performances at the airport. So, the timeline, upon your recommendations today, we will hit the ground running and immediately release those first requests for qualifications for the pedestrian walkway and the parking garage, because, as Sherri said, those projects are moving forward, and we want to ensure that the artwork gets seamlessly integrated into the construction of those projects. The artists will be selected for the remaining projects in conjunction with the construction of those projects, which will go through the summer. It's estimated that they'll go through the summer of 2027. So, with that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Supervisor Disner.
Sherri, as well.
Thank you, Shelley, and I agree 100% with Supervisor Serna on, you know, consideration for local artists, and also on the exhibits, you know, a rotating exhibit. I think that's really important for that. And then, I had a really good idea for artwork. I think, starting this year, as we rotate the message from the chair, we should have a life-size cutout of the chair, perhaps greeting people as they enter, you know, the people mover or something.
Yeah, I saw that coming.
Just for consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I second the motion.
Thank you. So, my first question is on the locations where it was chosen for the artwork, and this kind of picks up on what Supervisor Serna was asking about. Is that relative to those being individual jobs, and so there's a percentage associated with each job, or is it just the overall SM Forward work, generally speaking, and spreading the art around?
It's looking at the project as a whole. So, no, we didn't allocate, for example, 2% necessarily of the pedestrian walkway construction budget to art. We looked at the overall project, and we really paid attention to, you know, how the spaces will be used and how many people will see the work in those spaces.
Okay, and so that's great because you answered the first question, which is whether this was a percentage, you know, for public art. And I'm a big supporter of art, and I'm a big supporter of public art, and I agree with the preference for more local artists. But back to the parking garage, you know, as, by my math, that's almost a quarter to a third of the overall art budget being spent on the outside of a parking garage that people are probably going to whiz by as they're late to get parked and get into the terminal and everything else. And so, when I look at, you know, Terminal B, the big red rabbit is great, but at the tree chandelier in the post-security foyer is much more, you know, I pay more attention to it because now I've gotten there and I'm able to relax a little bit. Over in Terminal A, I can't even tell you if they're birds or planes or whatever, but the little metal structures that are outside are great, and they're whimsical, and they're cute. But whenever I see pictures of the airport, what art installation do I see pictures of? The stacked luggage that are concealing the posts, right? Because it's relevant, it's whimsical, and it's practical in that it's concealing the posts, and yet it applies to the location you're in. So, I just think spending that much money on the outside of a parking garage seems like a wasted opportunity for visitors coming to Sacramento. Yes, it may be more relevant for people who are parking in order to leave Sacramento, but for visitors coming to Sacramento. So, I just throw that out there as a consideration. I'm not looking necessarily to upend the apple cart here, but as we go forward, you know, I'll be looking at that.
Sure. All right.
Thank you. Any others? Supervisor Frost.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that I've been in a lot of airports recently, and Sacramento is hands down the best with art and wayfinding and ease and convenience and restaurants, and I just wanted to acknowledge you for your amazing, it's amazing, and it does make a difference when you're traveling to be in an airport that's clean and that works well and is convenient. So, I'm not surprised you're award-winning. You deserve it. So, anyway, thank you, and I like your proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley, I'll just say that it's great to see this come forward. There are those, some of us that were concerned at the dissolution of the city-county partnership, the Arts Commission, that maybe there wouldn't be continued emphasis and realization of the importance of art as we celebrate our community and make, you know, Sacramento a better place, and this shows that the county remains steadfast in supporting our public arts. Can we do more? We always can, but this is great, and I was particularly happy with our airport staffer reaching out to you, which gives me a great deal of confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. If there are no public speakers, I don't know if there are public speakers on this, Madam Clerk.
We do not have any speakers for this item.
I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
Second?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Okay, your next item is Item 57. This is a request for a public convenience of necessity letter from the Board of Supervisors regarding a Type 21 off-sale beer, wine, and spirits liquor license to Taj Supermarket at 7933 East Stockton Boulevard in the South Sacramento community.
Welcome, Jessica.
Good morning. Want to get settled here? So, good morning, Chair Kennedy, Board members. Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to present this PCN request for Taj Supermarket. So, the Taj Supermarket is located at 7933 East Stockton Boulevard, and it is within a shopping center with two other grocery stores that do both sell alcohol. The shopping center consists of Costco Wholesale Grocery Outlet, Wendy's, and the Taj Supermarket, which is established in early 2023. It is in the South Sacramento community, excuse me. The request is for a PCN letter to approve a Type 21 license issued by the State Alcohol Beverage Control Department. That is off-sale for beer, wine, and spirits at this existing grocery store. The reason for the PCN is that this is in a census tract that is considered over-concentrated. There are three licenses that are allowed in this census tract. There are currently four. This would be a fifth. And so, the census tract is currently over-concentrated by 133%. A little more community context. The community plan is shopping center as well as the zoning, so it's a commercial zoning. It is surrounded by some low-density single-family to the east, although that is undeveloped. And then, you do have Highway 99 to the west and more commercial and residential to the north. The subject parcel is also within a high-crime reporting subarea of the Sheriff, District 6, and so that is a second reason why this requires a PCN from the board. I'm going to skip that, come back to it. So, this is a one-mile radius map from the subject parcel showing other liquor sales in the area and sensitive uses. So, there are, within a one-mile radius, a total of 19 off-sale liquor licenses, seven that are Type 20, which is just beer and wine, and 12 that are Type 21. For sensitive uses, staff did note that there are four schools and four churches within the area. The subject parcel is also within the South Sacramento Environmental Justice Community, and we do discuss that in the staff report as well. The Sheriff's Department has issued a letter of protest on the PCN unless specified conditions are added to the ABC license. This is fairly standard. They do work with staff at ABC on adding conditions to the licensing, and the sheriff's letter is also part of the hearing package, and I believe the applicants could speak to some of those conditions. They are fairly minor, and some of them are actually already taken care of with the operational hours of the supermarket itself. But, again, the applicant could speak to those as well, and whether they're opposed to having those on their license when they speak with ABC about that, should the PCN be approved. Let me go back up. So, the actual supermarket itself specializes in Indian, Fajian, and Middle Eastern food and drink. The requested alcohol sales would mostly be products from those areas, and the sort of typical American alcohol offerings would be minimal. Business hours are, I believe, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the actual beer, wine, and liquor would be held in an area behind where the cashier is, so it'd be a very minimal part of the overall store floor area. As you can see, another item that is in the sheriff's condition letter is robust security. The floor plan here, you can see all of the red cameras. They will have very robust security. So, we do believe this is a fairly comprehensive security plan. There are also security measures in the shopping center overall. So, community input, this did go to the South Sacramento Community Planning Advisory Council in last November. Unfortunately, only two members were present, so we did not get a vote. However, there were no citizens that attended or called in. The applicant presented the request and highlighted their various offerings in the supermarket, and both council members were supportive of the PCN request, indicating there was no reason to object to the proposal and noting that the business seemed to reflect the inclusiveness and diversity of South Sacramento. And, as I mentioned, a formal CPAC recommendation is unavailable. And as I mentioned, a formal CPAC recommendation is unavailable. That just reiterates what I've already talked about. And I do want to mention that the MAC Road Partnership did also provide a letter of support for this supermarket and their PCN request. And a representative is here as well. And they were part of the CPAC meeting as well. So staff is recommending approval of this PCN, which I'm very glad to do. The, we believe that the applicants have demonstrated that the proposed sale of alcohol can be accomplished in a manner that sufficiently addresses or eliminate objections in county code, specifically without the operating standards such as the alcohol being kept in a secure room or behind the cashier, that there are security measures on-site and within the building to help with the purchases. And then the alcohol would only be available for sale from 9:00 a.m. to, I believe it's 10:00 p.m. I do think that says nine, but I do believe it's 10:00 p.m. And then further, we believe that the applicants have demonstrated that the issuance of a liquor license in this case is in the public convenience or necessity because the alcohol will be specialty beer, wine, and spirits catering to a specific group that is otherwise not available in this community. And it reflects the diverse cultural business needs of the community and also supports economic investment in South Sacramento. And so with that, staff, again, is recommending approval of the request for a letter of public convenience or necessity. And for the Taj Supermarket, again, the MAC Business Partnership representative is here, the applicant is available and I believe wishes to make a presentation as well. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
I don't see any questions. I will say, though, that your, the last part of your presentation, for your reasons, your rationale, I sincerely appreciate. That's kind of outside the parameters of traditional planning think and it's much appreciated recognizing the cultural value of this is something that we need to think more of. At this time, would the applicant like to make a brief presentation?
Good morning. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Punam Daliwal and I'm from Taj Supermarket. Taj Supermarket is an ethnic grocery store that we opened up six months ago. We sell Indian, Fijian, Pakistani, and Afghani groceries. Our building is 25,000 square foot. We are the largest one-of-a-kind Indian grocery store in Sacramento County. We are requesting an alcohol beverage license to sell imported beer and liquor from India, Pakistan, and Fiji. This specialty beverage is not available within a 50-mile radius. This is a much-needed specialty product requested by our customers. We will follow all the conditions imposed by the sheriff's office. Our hours, our operating hours are from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Alcohol beverages will be stored in a separate room, which will be accessible to employees only. Customers can request employees for help and they will get it for them. Our staff is highly trained and knowledgeable. We will use ID scanner to make sure no alcohol is sold to a minor. There is proper surveillance and we will have proper accountability of inventory. The parking lot is well-lit. Signs will be posted stating no open alcoholic beverage containers are allowed on the premises. It will be a peaceful operation with no disturbances late at night. Issuance of the license will have a positive impact on the, in the community. It will increase sales, create jobs, bring in more tax revenue while serving the needs of a culturally diverse community. It will truly make our supermarket a one-stop shop with the added convenience to purchase alcoholic beverages. We also have the support of MAC Road Association. Bill is here. We thank you for your time and hope our request is granted.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any questions from the board. I will say two things. One is if the supermarket gig doesn't work out for you, you should become an applicant representative before the board. I've also had the opportunity to go out on-site and meet with the applicants and was astounded by not only the quality of your market, but thinking from this perspective, the security, I mean, it's like nothing I've seen before in a similar situation. So you've been extremely positive and great to work with and community-minded and I appreciate that. With that, if there's no more comments, we have no public comment?
We do have one.
Okay.
Bill Knowlton.
Count to three, Bill. Count to three.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to take a moment to say how much of a asset this is going to be in our community. You know, Sacramento is changing and certainly South Sacramento is changing. Demographics are moving and we have different people coming in from all over the world to call South Sacramento home. And this, this, this project, as Supervisor Kennedy said, when you walk into this market, it's like going into another world. And it is clean and it is fresh and it's just really something that we're excited about at the MAC Road Partnership. So for us, a wholehearted support of this project and the, as again Supervisor Kennedy said, you know, the operators, you know, really, it's all in the operator. And the operators are just one-of-a-kind, wonderful people, great to do business with, and again, will be an asset to our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, any other public comment?
No, that's it.
All right, there's no questions or comments from the board. I will move staff recommendation of approval.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we now have, we had earlier, we had six public comments that were not able to get into the time earlier, so if those members of the public are here, Madam Clerk, are you prepared to put that on the board?
I am.
There we go. Thank you very much. Go ahead and call the first public.
Okay, Sarah.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sarah Pickering Pick. You'll never forget that name. This is for Supervisor Desmond's district, District 3. I am here to talk about the opening of Roads to Vehicles at Sailor Bar Park. I've been walking with my family and dogs at Sailor Bar for nearly 20 years. In that time, I have come to regard it as a one-of-a-kind place where I can enjoy a three-and-a-half-mile walk, watch the effect of the change of seasons on the river, spot wildlife, and chat with people, all without worrying about cars, traffic, noise, or trash. My kids learned to ride their bikes in the park, going on ahead of us as they wobbled along and without fear of a car coming down. There's a really diverse group of people who use Sailor Bar Park, young families, older people on their walking sticks, many seniors, senior walking groups, who really say that Sailor Bar is a one-of-a-kind place where they can walk without fear of cars, enjoy the river, and really experience something that is rare in this area. When I first moved to Fair Oaks, I walked in the park while the roads were open. So the roads have been open to vehicles before, over 15 years ago. And regularly, there were cars that would drive past the barriers, right up to the edge of the cliff, take rocks. There's a lot more, a lot more trash, a lot more noise, and it was generally less pleasant. And they've been closed for over 15 years, which has really enriched the entire park. I've heard from members of your staff that the goal of opening the roads is to make the park accessible to all, and I absolutely agree. All of us here agree. Everyone should be able to enjoy Sailor Bar. But opening the paths that are proposed to vehicles right now won't actually do that. They lead to rocky paths that are quite hard to manage.
Can you wrap up?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Any of us would be happy to walk down there with you and show us, show you the value that is Sailor Bar.
Thank you very much.
Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela Talent. I thought I understood disability until I learned I didn't. Before I got my disability, I loved going to Sailor Bar for a walk, feeling the rocks, crunch beneath my feet, hearing the birds, the musty smell of nature. And if I was lucky, I would get to see the deer galloping. They don't gallop, but you know, in the fields. So after my disability came on, I was frustrated because I had to use a wheelchair and I had this idea that everywhere I went needed to be accessible, and they do, but maybe not in the way that I first thought. Here's my journey. When I struggled to walk and needed a wheelchair, I went to Phoenix Park and I practiced on the paved path. I would sit and walk and then sit again. I remember worrying about the judgment from the other walkers and when I walked up to them, not walked up to them, I would, I might be sitting in the chair. But what I found out is they were cheering me on, they were excited. So slowly but surely, I was able to get out of the wheelchair. And today, I'm so excited to say that I'm strong enough. And in fact, I need to walk on the uneven surface of the gravel and rocks at Sailor Bar to continue to increase my strength. If I were talking here when I was first disabled, I would have said, "The whole of Sailor Bar needs to be paved." I wouldn't have been thinking about the other people that might need something else. Today, I'm here to say there's a different way. Maybe it's paving part of the wide pass, maybe it's something else. There are so many possibilities. But paving for automobiles takes away the experience of nature for everyone. And as you know, from overseeing coordinating for the safe transportation throughout the county, cars and pedestrians just don't mix. I'm curious, what did the Disability Commission say about this?
Thank you.
Emily.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Emily Pham and I present before you on behalf of the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I come to bring you some exciting news. I'd like to personally extend an invitation to each of the board members and to the public of Sacramento to join us as a community for our upcoming First Annual Women and Girls Festival on Saturday, March 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this will be hosted at Sacramento City College. It'll be a celebration of empowerment, diversity, and achievements within our community. For those that don't know, the mission of the Sacramento County Commission is to address barriers and equity to ensure greater awareness, accountability, and integration of different services and to improve the economic status and health and social welfare of women and girls in the Sacramento community. We are going to have a lot of different inspiring performances, diverse entertainment, and integrative activities within seven different zones. We will have family services, financial literacy, and education, housing, employment, county services, women and girls, and also a youth and kids zone. So it'll be a lot of fun. For more information, you can visit our social media Facebook page, which is @Sacramento Women and, Sac Women and Girls, or email us at friendsofsacwoman@gmail.com. And we also have a meeting with the Women's Commission later this evening at Floor and Road Partnership, if anyone wants to join. It's open to the public and it'll be from 5:30 to 7:30. That's it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. And thank you for being here and being patient. I saw you sitting in the back of chambers for quite some time this morning. And you also made my job a little easier today because I was, you took all the words out of my mouth. I was going to make note of the event on the 9th during our supervisor comments, but you did a much better job than I ever could. So again, appreciate you being here and letting us all know about this great inaugural event.
Thank you, Phil Serna.
Thank you.
Okay, who do we have next? Oh, Ms. Debbie.
Hey, good morning, Board. I just wanted to thank you for all that you do for our county. And I have a request that we entertain some discussion. I'm going to just say it first before I run out of time. The 17th of September is the Annual Constitution Week. And I would love for us to have our county recognize the Constitution formally, you know, how we recognize all the other events and all the other good causes in our county. I would like that somehow to start a discussion so that we can honor the, that week of September 15 through whatever that is, for Constitution Week. And also, the Constitution Discussion Group meets every other Thursday, as you know, and everyone's invited to attend. This portion, we're studying the grand jury and how that works. And what I would also like to do is invite you, we are going to be having Constitution Day in the park in Folsom on September the 15th. We're going to have bounce houses and popcorn and speakers and music. This will be our second annual event and I would like that to get on our calendar too. So there's lots of exciting things happening with studying the Constitution. There's a lot of us that are interested in speaking up and doing the duty to our, our government as we, the people. And so just to say, "We, the people of the state of California, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, in order to secure and perpetuate its blessings, do establish the Constitution." And just wanted to say thank you for all your service and for you taking your oath to uphold that. Thank you.
Okay. Elizabeth.
Hi. Hi, how are you? Just, I'm here to address the issue of opening cars to the Sailor Bar Parkway. And lived in the area for about 30 years and it's just a beautiful, very quiet, peaceful place. I think what I'd like to do is just bring up some of the 2008 park plan, which doesn't seem to coincide with the present plan. They had talked about the Warm Water Fishing Pond that should be considered as a potential location to enhance the access for persons with disabilities. The Illinois entrance is, does have a paved road that goes down to an existing boat ramp. And this seems like this is a perfectly fine place with two very large parking lots at that area. And there's also, it goes on to say that the natural vegetation and wildlife have returned among the tailings and any major improvements could reverse this project, process. In addition, the access roads are not very good. Since the Olive Avenue Access runs through an established neighborhood to the west, Sailor Bar is bordered by developed areas to the east, west, and north. Any development of Sailor Bar should consider activities which have minimal impact on natural vegetation, wildlife, and adjacent residential properties. Reading that, I don't understand how motor vehicles driving on these gravel and, they're not paved, they're gravel roads, I don't see how that goes along with what exists there now and the continuing recovery from the mining operations. There's also been extensive salmon rehabilitation work done and bringing motor vehicles in with anything that drips from the motor vehicles, the exhaust on this delicate environment could have a devastating impact. It's not safe to have cars and people walking, you know, children learning to ride bikes, people walking their dogs, the elderly, on these same paths that they have, they expect to have vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody.
I'm Jody King. We, the Friends of Sailor Bar, are respectfully asking the supervisors to pause on reopening the interior roads at Sailor Bar in order to allow time to adequately engage in the public process as dictated by the public notification procedure and also to require an environmental review as necessary, giving the 15-year gap in time between when the roads were closed. My experience has been that people, for the most part, are respectful of the wildlife at Sailor Bar. The wildlife is flourishing and there is harmony amongst humans and animals. People visit Sailor Bar for different types of recreation. For me, it's a place to retreat away from the cars and concrete and be alone with God. When my mom was in her final months before she passed on, I would go to Sailor Bar and find Solis just sitting on a log, watching the birds gathering to feast on the salmon. We may go to Sailor Bar for various forms of recreation, but really, we go there because it is our human nature to seek the peacefulness of being in nature. I thought I was alone in my dismay when I noticed the parking signs and work being done to widen and resurface the roads, but I found out others had the same concern. This peaceful, pristine haven would soon be no more. Today, there are over 1,700 of us who want to keep the sanctity of this nurturing place by keeping, keeping the public vehicles out. How important is it to you to preserve this only place along the Parkway that is safe, free of homeless encampments, and trash now and for future generations?
Thank you very much.
That concludes your comments. Chairperson?
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we can't get back and forth with folks. I just want to stay public. I support reopening the areas in Sailor Bar unequivocally. This board has made a lot of investments in both maintenance staff and rangers so we can maximize the access to the parks on that forum, our American River Parkway. However, I do know, I appreciate the concerns of many of the residents in Fair Oaks about this, and just want to double-check with Mr. DeFanti. I believe there's still some things we are evaluating before we move forward with this. Is that correct, Dave?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I want to thank everybody who made the time to work with our schedule and those that waited and those that came back. Thank you, and I appreciate the civil manner in which you addressed the board, and thank you very much. I believe that brings us to nominations.
Yes, it does. Item 58. You are continuing to March 12th the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Art and Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands-Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to March 26th Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Walton, Casumnas, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to April 9th is the Assessment Appeals Board, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, and the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board. And for your items today, you have the Adult and Aging Commission.
Yes, Chiefs nominate Megan Riker and continue the remainder to April 9th.
Thank you. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to April 9th.
Thank you. Children's Coalition.
Chiefs nominate Megan Matteone and continue the rest till April 9th.
Thank you. Community Review Commission.
Please appoint William Cho.
Do you want to waive the process?
Please waive the process.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Frost?
I'm sorry. I got distracted.
We waive the process.
Waive the process. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to March 26th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to April 9th.
Law Library Board of Trustees.
Chiefs reappoint June Coleman and waive the process.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to March 26th.
Okay, thank you. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Continue to March 26th.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. I'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to March 26th.
Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to March 12th.
And then Chair Kennedy?
Chiefs nominate Alicia Jefferson.
Thank you. That concludes your nominations.
Thank you. That brings us to county executive comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just wanted to take a moment to let you, let you know that, which I'm sure you already know, that there's a small election going on starting on March 5th, presidential primary election. And this last weekend, we opened 18 of our vote centers, and they will be open 11 days up until the election, which means voters can choose when and where and how they want to vote at any of the vote centers here in the county. And it also avoids long lines, being that it's been set up for quite some time. In addition to that, there'll be an additional 70 vote centers set up four days before the election, which begins on March 2nd. And these locations can be found on elections.saccounty.gov or in the Election Voter Information Guides. And I would just like to express my sincere thanks to the staff of voter registration and elections who are working hard to secure, both, working hard to secure both, you know, a secure election and a convenient voting options for our residents. And just to let folks know, we have about 868,000 registered voters here in Sacramento County. Lastly, I would add that voter registration is open for tours. They allow tours on Wednesdays and Thursdays at 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and they go over the life of a ballot, a ballot, and share the process and try to answer as many questions and dispel any myths that may be out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. To the subject you just mentioned, David, Supervisor Hume and I were chatting a bit when we heard earlier from folks speaking off agenda about their concerns about election integrity. I think it would be helpful if we can belt and suspenders this a bit more. I appreciate the fact that we have tours now and, you know, there's invitations generally to the public to go see for themselves how we maintain a, you know, a, in my estimation, a pretty flawless election process. But I think on the website, the web portal for our registrar's office, if there can be something a little more pronounced and obvious about election integrity and maybe a myth-busting, you know, dropdown or something that really gives the voting public the confidence in the, in our systems, as much as I think all five of us believe in it. So I think the closer we get to March 5th, I don't know that we can do that that fast, but maybe in time for the general, I think it'd be helpful.
It's a great idea.
Great idea. Thank you very much, Supervisor.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I may have keyed in too soon. Is it appropriate to make supervisor comments now, or is this?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay, then I just wanted to say we received an email earlier from our Director of Airports that one of our employees out there had a pretty significant accident and was taken to the hospital in critical condition to the extent that they're still with us. I pray for a recovery and should they have succumbed to their injuries, I issue my condolences to their friends and family and loved ones.
Thank you. I think we all join you in that. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. I may have keyed in too soon. Is it appropriate to make supervisor comments now, or is this?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay, then I just wanted to say we received an email earlier from our Director of Airports that one of our employees out there had a pretty significant accident and was taken to the hospital in critical condition to the extent that they're still with us. I pray for a recovery and should they have succumbed to their injuries, I issue my condolences to their friends and family and loved ones.
Thank you. I think we all join you in that. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. I'm requesting to close in memory. I don't know if others, is this the right, appropriate time?
You were the last commenter, so go ahead.
Okay, well, this afternoon, we're saying goodbye to a friend in Citrus Heights. Jason E. Tupper was born May 26, 1971, and passed on January 26, 2024. He was dedicated, he dedicated over 30 years of his life to the Citrus Heights Water District, starting as a laborer and raising to Water Resources Specialist. Jason was known for his professional expertise and significant contributions to water management. But he was much more than that. He was a pillar in our community, leading charity initiatives with compassion and fighting cancer with incredible courage. His commitment to service, leadership, and genuine care for both people and the planet leaves a lasting legacy. Jason is survived by his wife, Melinda Tupper, his sons, Anthony and David Tupper, and his daughter, Stephanie Tupper. As we reflect on Jason's life, I just, it's inspiring. His life was an inspiration, a wonderful reminder to all of us that one individual can make a profound impact on many lives. May he rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We do have closed session, and for now, we will adjourn in the memory of Jason Tupper.